How does the Civil Review Board go about fighting for the rights of parents or families?
We should be just going to the school and saying, you're done. That's not going to happen in my daughter's classroom. It's not going to happen in her bathroom, and it's not going to happen on the sports field. The end goal should be the protection of our children.
Would you say that the Civil Review Board takes a neutral position politically?
The left is at war with us, the people of this country. Keep your hands off my kids and you'll be fine. Touch my kids and I'm coming for you, and I'm bringing everybody with me. This is the safety and well-being of our children. We should be grizzly bears. We should be the most vicious of all beasts on the planet when somebody's taking advantage of our children.
America is all about the people like yourself who would take on a cause, rally people around you and fight for what's right. This is the I E B N podcast. I'm Najah Faisal. Education shapes our future. But what if the values being taught at school clash with the values of the families they serve? As a child of two educators and someone who have worked in education leadership, I've witnessed firsthand the power of classroom in shaping young minds. And here in California, education has become a battleground, steering heated debates and deep divisions. To discuss this topic, I'm joined by Eric Stalter, founder of the Civil Review Board, a watchdog organization dedicated to ensuring that schools respect the values and rights of parents. Welcome to the program, Eric.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
So tell us about the Civil Review Board.
All right. Well, the Civil Review Board is an organization that was founded four years ago, approximately. And what it is, the purpose of the Civil Review Board is number one, to hold elected officials accountable, specifically school board members. We designed the Civil Review Board model to mirror any governing body, but the need to focus on education is so great that that's where we are focusing our time. So number one is to hold elected officials, again, specifically school board representatives, accountable to the communities they were elected or appointed to serve. Number two, we are here to provide resources to the community, resources such as legislative resources, education code training, legal referrals, school choice referrals, on and on and on. And thirdly, is to raise community leaders, people that will join us in this effort. And I want to be very clear, we work from a dignified perspective. You know, we're not here, you know, to use a battering ram to go after school boards and expose them and recall them and get them busted. No, we're here, our main purpose is to work with them. But if they are unwilling to work with us, we have to do what we have to do, which means we have to bring good people into the system, raise them up, get them exposed to the community, show the community that these people are here for them. And then what we do is we separate from them, they separate from us, because the Civil Review Board is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So when they decide, if they decide they want to go into public service as an elected representative, they separate from us and they will go into their campaign. And, you know, hopefully that process recycles, right? Every two-year election cycle, we do the same thing. And then fourthly, very important, is to work with teachers, staff, parents and their students. You know, and I want to be clear, parents and their students, because we don't work directly with students, we work with the parents, you know, to expose hidden curriculums and behaviors inside the school system that are not in the best interest of the student and family. So that's the basic nutshell version of it.
Awesome. And the natural question is like, why? What drives you? What makes you start the Civil Review Board?
You know, it's a question, I always wonder, like, when people get asked questions like this and they're talking and they tell it, you think, okay, if you watch this person three, four, or five times, they're going to give the same answer. And I always thought, why is that? Well, it's because it's the answer, right? It's what happens. And this isn't a canned thing. And I realize these people aren't giving canned responses to things like this. There are actually things that happen in people's lives that cause them to do something. Look, I was wanting to start the next chapter of my life. I'm 55. At the time, I was 51. I was looking to, okay, what are we going to do here? Our kids are adults, we want to move on, right? We want to experience the country. We want to go and visit our kids where they're living and do those things. But I was walking through my kitchen one day, and here's the story part, right? I don't watch television. I was walking through my kitchen and I would get my news from my iPad. I would watch news snippets. And I was listening to Tucker Carlson on a news snippet. And I'm walking through my kitchen and he says, well, they don't have civil review boards anymore, but oh, well. Something to that effect. He mentioned civil review boards and he says, they're not around, but oh, well. And just kind of off the cuff, I thought, you know, what's a civil review board, first of all? And then I thought, oh, that's exactly what it is. So that's where the idea came, was a simple thing. Najah, I think God is involved. I'm no poster child for the Christian faith, but I wouldn't be here if God didn't throw this in my lap and say, it's yours, do it, do it. Get these people, do that, do that. And it's not me, it's not me, it's a team effort. There's lots of people that I, all I have to do is go out and find the right people for this. Probably going real long on the question and not doing a very good job of answering it, but there you go.
No, I think you're spot on, but I understood that Tucker Carlson, when he mentioned several review boards, don't have them anymore, that sparks you to start it. But there must be some sort of reasons beforehand. We're talking about, like, for example, I don't know, your kids perhaps, the things that happened to your kids at school, things that you heard about what's happening in schools that are not quite right. Is there anything of that nature?
Yeah, yeah, it was COVID and it was the government. For me, it was the government. I immediately, when COVID and all that stuff came out, it wasn't like, oh, my gosh, you know, people are getting sick. It was kind of a weird, different experience. It was this big picture sort of a thing like government control. It's what it is, is there, you know, coming to take control? And so for me, it was, I went out and a friend of mine and I, we were complaining to each other about what was going on during COVID and our rights being taken. And it was that video with Tucker Carlson that put the Civil Review Board into my head, but it was a general, I don't know what the word is, but a general thing where all of our rights were being clearly taken from us in that time period. And, you know, for me, I saw our kids are now, they've become the target. My grandchildren, you know, my kids are up and out of school. And I had actually a very good experience in the public school system with my kids and things like that. I got to go on all the play days, so I was there. The teachers were wonderful, the staff was excellent. I didn't look beyond that because I had good relationships with the teachers, good relationships with the staff, I was always there on play day with my kids. So I got to see the, you know, the fun side of everything and didn't pay attention to the deeper side, which yes, was in effect back then, but my eyes weren't open and my kids didn't see as much of it as we are today. The social engineering in the school system today is heavy. In fact, that's all the schools are, is a social engineering, you know, breeding ground for social engineering and activism of any kind, you know? And again, I'm going long, I don't mean to not answer your question, but I started the Liberty Lab four years ago. That was the first thing as a result of my frustration with what was going on. And then after that was when I heard the video Tucker Carlson, and that's when it really was laid on my heart. But an experience with my kids or grandkids, no, that wasn't it.
And how does the Civil Review Board go about fighting for the rights of parents or families? For having some sort of control over their children's education?
Well, it's a good question. It's, I want to answer it correctly. How do we go about it? Number one, we go about it in a very dignified way. You know, you can't, again, I said earlier, you can't go at people with a battering ram. What kind of results do you get there? What do they say? You get more bees with honey than you do vinegar? And there's truth to that. You get more bees with honey than you do vinegar. And treating people with respect, even those you disagree with, is the best way to a solution. We're engaged in what we call solution-based conversations that lead to solution-based activities. So what we do is we approach it, our procedures and operations manual demands that of us, that we approach it in a dignified way with no cursing, no swearing, no bitterness, no anger. We've got to go in there with fact, we've got to go in there with truth on our side, with the intention of empowering the parents. The real voice is the parents. So if we go in and just saying, well, we want this done and we want that done, well, that's wholly ineffective, right? Because that's just what we want. But what we're doing is representing our community. And especially, and this is very important, the community that is afraid, the community that maybe doesn't speak English and doesn't know how to navigate the system, the community that does speak English and doesn't know how to navigate the system. There is so much to the public education system. You will wonder, every school board meeting you go to, you will wonder, where does education fit in?
Exactly. And that's the video I sent you before this talk, where in, I believe Rancho Cocomanga, they say Rancho, but we don't know if it's Rancho Cocomanga or some other place, that they were talking about some sort of things that the teacher is doing in a classroom that has nothing to do with really education. Can you talk more about this?
Sure. The video you sent me was where the teacher was putting kids in a circle in the room, correct? And they're talking about if they were gay or lesbian. And then there was some sort of exercise to that effect. What does that have to do with education? And if we're talking about a, any lifestyle decision for that child, that does not belong in the school system. You've got, and what we also talked about is sort of the myopic approach to this, right? Everybody's talking about the LGBTQ and the trans problems. And there's so much more to this. These are just the drivers they use, you know? Look, if they can get us to keep sending our kids to school when they are clearly indoctrinating them, sexualizing them, turning them into climate activists and social activists of any sort, if they can do that and then go on to putting them on puberty blockers, passing laws, actual laws in the state of California that have passed, it says they can take your 12-year-old out of the school unilaterally without your knowledge or consent. That's a California state law. How many people know about that? But if they can do that and we will keep sending our kids to that school, why would they change what they're doing? They have no intention of educating our children. California is 48th, I believe, in the nation for education. Now, the Civil Review Board has a nationwide plan and we're going for it. We're going all the way. But right now, we're talking about California. We're 48th in the nation. The nation, United States, is super low on the totem pole. And I don't know the exact numbers of where education in the world, globally speaking, were super low, third-world country statistic type of stuff. And right here in San Bernardino and Riverside counties, our students are under 40% in math and English proficiency. That's a failure of the system. And when people say, oh, well, they're just failing at it. And I say, it's a failure, but this is an intentional failure of the system.
You mentioned they're trying to indoctrinate the kids. Why?
Why are they trying to indoctrinate?
What's the end goal here?
Well, you're asking my opinion. This, you know, obviously isn't, you know, I can't say, well, this is the truth, but this is my opinion. What else would the end goal be besides total and absolute control over the subject? What else would it be? If we dumb down our students and they are mentally equipped to handle only so much, all we have to do is plug them into the system, the system that is making money for the oligarchs. You ask my opinion, I'm going to give you my opinion.
Got it.
So you've got a group of people that are steering the boat, as it were. And all of this comes down to money. You know, we want stupid kids so the rich stay richer. We want indoctrinated kids, we want angry kids, we want kids that hate each other because we look different. You're supposed to hate me. The school system is teaching you that you should hate me because we look different or that one of us is an oppressor to the other. If one of us is oppressing the other, we ought to work that out. We shouldn't teach the hate. I mean, it's just craziness. And again, you got me on stuff I'm rambling, so I'll chill. But that's my opinion, Najah, and I can't, you know?
Yeah. So in the last two years where the Civil Review Board has been active in the community, we're talking Inland Empire, where else are you, are you currently present?
Currently, we are in Ucaypa-Calamasa School District. We're in Cajon Valley School District in the San Diego area. We're in Fontana School District, Ontario-Montclair, Chaffey, Alta Loma. We've got five actual working boards and we cover about nine to 10 school districts. One of those boards, the Rancho Chapter, I should say Chapters, that chapter covers many school districts because there's middle schools and middle schools that feed into a high school system. So we've combined that to cover multiple schools and so we've got that. But right now, California, Southern California, San Diego areas where we cover, and we're growing.
Right. And when you say we cover, what does that mean?
Well, we built five-person chapters in every district that we're in. We build a five-person chapter. That chapter is responsible for leading the community, you know, providing those resources, but not doing all the legwork, right? We're here to build an army. We've got to build an army. So we can't just have five people doing everything. You know, if we're going to say we're representing the community, we have to have the community with us. So we build the five-person chapters to provide those resources that we talked about, to find those candidates to run for school board that we talked about, to work with the school district and to also, very, very important, is to engage the community in the civic process. That's the important part. Because if it's just the five of us going and the school board knows that it's just the five of us, well, we're just squawking. But the more we bring people in, you know, when there is just five of you in the school board meeting, and I've got a perfect example of this. We were in one school district and we were dealing with curriculum. And the parents were at the, sorry, the parents were at the end of the curriculum approval process. It was an eight-month process, they were at the end of it. So the curriculum had already been implemented by the time it got to the parents. We changed that process. That process changed to the parents being put at the front of the process instead of at the end of the process. Now, it's a nine-month process in that particular district. But the point is, is that because we had had so many people behind us in the initial meetings, that process took place in the summertime when there wasn't people in the school board meetings. I believe it's because they saw the previous action with the parents and the community engagement that led them to actually pursue that. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Speaking of some of the issues that you help shed light on, would you say that your role as a Civil Review Board is to raise awareness or to change laws or to, when you say, hold the elected officials accountable? What does that mean?
Well, the answer would be D, all of the above. It is to raise awareness. It is to hold the elected officials accountable. Because we're not going to get enough people to hold our elected officials accountable until they're actually aware of what our elected officials are doing, especially when those elected officials are doing it to their children. That's where the real rub comes in, right? When they're working their money situations and their budget situations and they're this building and that building, but there's no education conversation in there and we're not there holding them accountable. So it's all part of the same process. We have to make people aware, we have to hold them accountable, and we have to act. We have to stay in the process consistently until that accountability process is completed.
The argument is that, the argument on the other side says, well, schools are just following the laws. So what, how can you battle that? Or how can you do, what can you do about this?
Well, there are oppressive laws, there are mandates, they're not designed for the good of the community. And we live in a republic, not a democracy. We are an active, we are a part of that government process. So it is our voice and our action that will change those laws and policies that are oppressive to us and damaging to our children.
Got it. And how do you go about changing the laws, for example?
Consistent effort.
Okay.
Consistent effort. We have to, we have to be there consistently. We've got to get inside of the system. We've got to know what we're talking about. We've got to use their laws against them. Because many of these laws that are used to oppress us, we can actually turn and use to our favor, you know what I mean? Or to the benefit of the community as opposed to this all the time. See, they don't want to benefit the community. The left is at war with us, the people of this country. That is my belief. And so they're going to continue to do these things to us. And we don't have to, we have to understand we're at war, right? But we don't, we don't have to. The end result of war is bitterness, nobody wins. So we have to take the approach, the peace, the strength through peace sort of a thing. We build from that, we build the army. And I'm not answering your question, I'm rambling.
Don't worry about it.
Tell me again.
Yeah, I asked you about the laws and you did answer that with consistent effort, you will get more people engaged and therefore more people litigating and lobbying against those launchers change. And I think the more people know what's happening. Take, for example, a few days ago, the incident in Riverside where a trans girl wanted to join the girls' sports team. I'm not sure which one was it. And it creates a lot of conflict and controversy. What would be your stand on that matter?
Well, my stand personally and the stand for the Civil Review Board is that no biological male has a right to steal from a biological female, anything. And in a lot of these cases, this is, I would submit to you, Najah, that those young biological males that are being used to do these things are in many cases just as much of a victim as these young girls. We've got a system of educators, by the way, most of which, and this is going to be something that people are going to not appreciate, but SAT scores among our educators are among the lowest SAT scores out there. So we've got a system of educators that is teaching our children, as we talked about, this social engineering thing. And they are using these young boys and these young girls who they're using in this grotesque butchering of children to do whatever it is they're trying to do. But they're using these boys, they're all victims, these boys and girls on both sides of this. So when you put this boy in there to do that, it's not always the case that they just want to be a girl. Some of these boys are predators, just predators. We were, one of our districts, Rancho, there was two young, three young ladies that spoke, devastated young ladies that spoke because a transgender boy was falling into the bathroom, making suggestions, dropping his pants and showing his private parts to young ladies and all meanwhile claiming, I'm female. So we're not doing anything but victimizing these young ladies. And the sooner, the sooner the men in this country say, this isn't going to happen to my daughter anymore, the soon as that happens, I'll bet you, you see schools across this country go, oh, that was a bad policy. Because it is a bad policy. We're just quiet. We say nothing when we should be standing up and saying, you're wrong, you're doing what's wrong. We shouldn't be arguing about this. We shouldn't even be discussing it in a friendly manner. We should be just going to the school and saying, you're done. That's not going to happen in my daughter's classroom. It's not going to happen in her bathroom and it's not going to happen on the sports field. These kids are losing college scholarships, they're afraid to go to the bathroom, petrified to go to the bathroom.
Oh, wow.
What are we doing to our kids? This isn't a public education campus where they have to fear for their safety.
That's mind-blowing.
And we want to call this the rights of the transgender? Just another human that we've victimized into believing they've got this problem which they don't have? And if they do, that's a medical problem, not a school problem?
Yeah, it's very important what you say, the separation, that this is, we're not taking liberties away from people, from especially adults who decide to claim any gender or any sexual orientation. It's completely their freedom.
That's right.
But your Civil Review Board is just trying to separate that away from schools.
Sure. Yeah, you don't see us at the liquor store telling them to remove their Penthouse magazines, do you? No. But you put that Penthouse magazine in the school library? By the way, I would compare much of the literature that they do put in the school library to Penthouse. When they put it in there, now we have a problem. And you want to call that book banning? It's not book banning, it's age and content appropriate. And if you want to label that book banning, go for it, I don't care. I don't care, you know?
What other issues have you seen throughout working with the Civil Review Board or starting it and being involved?
You know, it's been interesting the last few years. We've seen, we've seen cases, I'll give you some examples because they're public examples. The Ucaypa-Calamasa Joint Unified School District had an issue last year of a former Teacher of the Year, Teacher of the Year. She had just received this award. She was accused of having an ongoing sexual affair with a young student, 15 years old. She actually snuck into his house through his bedroom window and was found in his bedroom by the family. This, to my knowledge, this devastated this young man. You know, and we think, oh, you know, we should be running around high-fiving this boy, you know, that mentality, right? Oh, he got, you know? But no, this was devastating. And he was victimized, we saw that. The school, do they take action? I don't know. We could say yes, we could say no. The app was gone, but there's been little, you know, I guess for that, you'd have to talk to the family. That's an issue and that's an ongoing issue and with many of the schools. You know, how many times you turn on the TV and another teacher's been having sexual relations with a student? Well, when it's in all of the literature, are you shocked? When it's in all of the curriculum, are you shocked? You know, we shouldn't be, you know? So you've got that, you've got what we've talked about, the transgender and the LGBTQ issues. One of our district's Fontana Chapter right now, they're dealing with the Fontana School District over an LGBTQ flag in the classroom that apparently students are having to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to this only flag in the classroom. Now, if that's not a divisive measure, I don't know what is. And we can't allow this divisiveness to be taking place. That's that. The biggest thing, the biggest thing that we don't pay attention to and really should be that all of this ties back into is the cash, the money. Follow the money, follow the money. Well, they're spending money on all these programs, but the kids aren't being educated.
Okay.
Somebody's getting a return on their money and it's not the families.
Who?
It's the system.
Okay.
It's the oligarchs. It's those that are, you know, you've got, again, go to a school board meeting and you can count how many times they actually discuss proficiency and education. But yet, do you think it's the oligarchs or it's like an intentional act
of indoctrinating people or is it simply a result of overregulation?
Well, I would say both, I guess. But yeah, I don't, and this is more about the CRB, I think, this whole thing. But my opinion is, it is both. They've, they want control. And, you know, if we talk about history, if you go into, and I have a very limited view of history. I'm not a, I love it, but I'm not very educated in it. You know, I kind of just took an interest later in life, so, which is probably good because the schools probably were lying to us about it back then when I wasn't paying attention. I think the overregulation is a part of the intentional act.
Okay.
I guess that's the best way of saying it without getting into a big, long thing like I've been doing this morning.
Got it. Okay. So in terms of wins, what would you say were the biggest wins that the CRB has accomplished in the last few years?
Well, when it comes to wins, victories, it's a tough game, right? We don't, we can't just walk into a school board and change policies or change their minds or change those things. So we make a habit of celebrating the small victories, the things like the curriculum changes or the, you know, policy changes on a local level or, you know, different, different small victories, we call them. But one of the biggest, I'd say, successes that we've had is, has nothing to do with the school district itself in that sort of way, but it has to do with the community that we work with. And we're getting more and more people engaged and we're seeing more men step up to the table. And one of the hugest successes that I think I could, I would like to share with you and everybody listening is that we are crossing language barriers. We're doing that. We're, you know, we just did a Spanish radio show the other day. We have a Hispanic outreach team. This is a huge community, the Spanish-speaking community. And they are, they are taking a beating right now from the public education system. So we've been able to cross that language barrier and that is going to pay off in dividends.
The fact that there is a Civil Review Board, in my opinion, is a win, right? The fact that this organization exists.
Thank you.
Is a huge step forward. The second part is that you're giving voice and you're empowering parents. And this probably leading to the next question was, if someone's listening right now, a parent who have kids in the school or maybe a sibling of a kid, what, how could they get involved? How could they get involved? What kind of action could they take to support or join and how do they do that?
Okay. Well, you can go to civilreviewboard.com, that's our website. On our social media sites, it's @civilreviewboard. On our social media sites, it's @civilreviewboard. Um, we are going through some, some digital media changes right now, so if it's, if, if, you know, if you get confused or frustrated, please bear with us just a minute, we're getting through all that. By the, you know, by early, early this coming year, we should have all those bugs worked out. But you can get ahold of us through there. You can reach me personally at eric@civilreviewboard.com, that is my email address. Or you can email the Civil Review Board, just generalquestions@civilreviewboard@gmail.com. Um, there's those ways. You can come to any one of our monthly roundtables that we have in all of the districts that we're in. Um, those are, those are used to bring the community together, not on a social media platform, but in an actual, physical location, um, mostly churches, uh, that, that provide us with their facilities to do this in. You wanna come to those to get involved, um, you wanna come to the meet and greets, you know, we're, we're, we're putting candidates out in front of you, you wanna meet them, you wanna, you wanna come to the different town halls we have that, that cover vaping, fentanyl use, uh, vaping use in the schools, fentanyl deaths, we've had those town halls. Um, um, the, the education crisis, we talk about different things, education-related in these events. We bring elected and appointed officials, we work, we actually work with them, you know, to, to do these things and to get the word out. And so you can, you can get to us through those. Um, the biggest thing I would say, the biggest thing, that, that the number one step to, to all of this, getting involved, is don't be afraid. And don't, don't like concern yourself about where you might have to start. These are just human beings, these are just other men that we have turned over our power to, and they've abused it. And so now it's time for us to take our power back. And that's very simple, I believe power is an assumable thing. So we come together, we take our power back, and we must not be afraid in that, in that process.
I've worked in school before, my family business owned a school, and I think a lot of parents are afraid of retribution. Like, if they speak up, if they join organizations like the Civil Review Board, if they start being loud, they're afraid that the school will kind of indirectly take action against their kids in an indirect way, or sometimes directly as well. So how do you comfort the parents who are worried about some sort of retribution?
Well, uh, sticks and stones. I mean, say what you will, you know, say what you will, I just don't care. I just don't care, and I, I, I think, you know, as, as, as human beings, we've gotten ourselves way too concerned with what other people think about us. That's number one, that's just on a personal thing, but more importantly, this is the safety and well-being of our children. We should be grizzly bears, we should be the most vicious of all beasts on the planet when somebody's taking advantage of our children. And retribution or anything else should not matter to us. It should be, the end goal should be the protection of our children. First and foremost, our own, and then those in our community. Because if we don't, how do we survive?
My last question, maybe, maybe we can discuss, um, other, other topics as well, but we are in California. California is generally, and I don't mean to be political here, but, you know, it's a fact of the matter, it's a blue state, um, and therefore a lot of the people listening to this, I mean, they subscribe to some liberal values or, um, Democrats, Republicans, there's, there's a blend here. Would you say that the Civil Review Board is, takes a neutral position politically?
Well, you maintain that by, by, or I maintain it by knowing that what I think or believe isn't necessarily what you think or believe. I mean, I, I can't, I can't do everything that I do being concerned about what you believe. All I can do is structure it that's, in a way that says, you know, I don't care what you believe, you're a fellow human, and, and I'm gonna do what I can for you, for, to make your life a little bit better, or just do what I said, Judeo-Christian values. I, I can't, I can't see you hurting and step over you and just keep on walking, that's a human thing. So are we political? I say no, but there's a lot of people who are gonna say yes, and that's fine. But if you wanna categorize children's safety as a political thing, go ahead, call it political. I don't care, but I'm gonna fight for the safety of children. And, and how do we include everybody? It doesn't, you and I have not talked about our separate religions, and we've talked a lot. I don't care. What I know is that your value set, regardless of what your religion is, your value set is very similar to mine. And any other human being out there that's listening to this, we all want to be in our home safe, we want our children to be kept safe, we don't want anybody stealing them or picking them up or taking them or, you know, cutting off their body parts or teaching them things that don't align with our value sets. We don't want that. And so you and I can go to them and say, "Listen, we're totally different." Like I told you with the Spanish-speaking, uh, people earlier, we're gonna go to that place together, not knowing a single word that the other one is saying, but we're basing it off of our value set, which is the same. So it's not a religious thing or a political thing. Keep your hands off my kids and you'll be fine. Touch my kids and I'm coming for you, and I'm bringing everybody with me.
I mean, animals do that as well, it's not even, it's, it's beyond human, it's beyond human. All right, people are listening to this, and they're saying, "Great, we tackled a little bit, how to get involved, reaching out to you, joining the monthly meetings, the meet and greet, et cetera." But what would you want people to take out from that conversation? A single idea for them to take out?
You know, God gave us each the gift of life, it's the truth. And, and with that gift, as with any gift, I have a responsibility to look after it. And so we have the luxury, we have the blessing, the benefit of living in a country where our prayers are about things like, you know, my, how am I gonna get the money for my car payment? When other people's prayers are, how am I gonna feed my child? You know, so we, we have everything, we have it all. But we take advantage of it by not protecting it. And, and I've used this example before, if, if, if you have a child that you just bought a new bicycle for, for Christmas, we're at Christmas time, and they rode the bike and then left it at the end of the driveway, and at the end of Christmas Day, their new bike got stolen because they left it at the end of the driveway, didn't take care of the new gift that they just got from Santa. What are you gonna say to your child? You're gonna say, "You disrespected that gift and it got taken from you." We have a gift, we have liberty, we have some liberty. We need to protect that, we need to value it, we need to treasure it, we need to engage with each other on that same value set to come and protect it. And it really is an easy process once we realize that we're, the end goal that we're working towards, and that we get to work with each other in, in seeking that out. So my final words would be that, would be to understand the gift that we have and the liberty that we have, it's why we're all here. If we weren't born here, we came here for it. And we have to appreciate it, because if we don't, our kids won't even get it. And what good is that? You know, you go to a park, you don't throw all your crap all over the park and say, "Oh, somebody else will get it." Why would we do that with our kids' future? But it's what we're doing. We need to respect what we have, we need to protect what we have, we need to fight for it in some cases. And that's what we're doing now.
Absolutely.
So join us.
And you know, that, that's the power of America. America is, is all about the people, people like yourself who would take on a cause, rally people around you and fight for, for what's right. And, um, yeah, I, I salute you, I respect you, um, and good luck with everything, and thank you for taking time.
Thank you, I appreciate you.